Great. Welcome to the January 8, 2025, meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Aparna is delayed and will join us shortly. Commissioner Coleman.
Present.
Commissioner Copely.
Present.
Commissioner Gonye.
Present.
Commissioner Van Dymen.
Present.
Vice Chair Woodier.
Present.
And I am Chair Weston. Thank you to the following staff for being present tonight. Jeff Churchill, Glenn Coyle, Ian Lefcourt, Becky Fry, and Chip Cornwell. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, that's approved. And I look for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December 4 and December 18, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, now it's time for us to hear public comment and items for the audience. This will be for topics that aren't addressed by our public hearing later tonight.
Our first and only item from the audience is from David M.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners and staff. I'm David Morton, Redmond 98053. Based on the 2025 Code Package Zones and Uses Issues Matrix, here's a list of questions. First, zoning boundaries. What additional criteria were used to consolidate zones beyond existing boundaries? And how were community feedback and environmental factors integrated? And are there plans to address the concerns raised about gaps in downtown edge boundaries? Second, construction depth and de-watering. Could you clarify how the restrictions on de-watering vary by soil types and groundwater levels in specific zones? Is there consideration for zone-specific maximum subterranean construction depth standards? Third, community engagement impact. Can you provide detailed examples of how community feedback directly altered zoning proposals, particularly in contentious zones like Marymore Village? Fourth, micro retail and mixed-use development. How does the micro retail definition ensure compatibility with neighboring uses in high-density areas? And what safeguards exist if commercial components in mixed-use zones fail to attract interest, raising or risking commercial use loss? Fifth, urban mixed-use specifics. What measures are in place to balance preserving large-format retail with transitioning towards smaller-scale mixed-use developments? Sixth, corridor and neighborhood mixed-use. What criteria might guide the future addition of CMU zones? And how will these align with growth and equity goals? And can the checklist for NMU site selection and potential rezoning opportunities be shared for transparency? Seventh, home businesses. How will nuisance complaints like noise and odors related to home businesses be objectively assessed and resolved? And could you elaborate on restrictions for signage and creation of a directory? Eighth, food truck courts. Are there specific guidelines for minimizing environmental impacts like generator noise or waste management in NMU zones? Ninth, critical aquifer recharge areas, or CARAs. Could further clarity be provided on the designation and practical limitations applied to prohibited uses in CARAs? Tenth, public spaces and arts. How will the proposed regulations promote the integration of performing arts and other cultural activities into zoning plans? Finally, equity considerations. How are small-business-focused initiatives like pop-up retail and food truck courts tailored to support underrepresented groups? Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, with that, we're going to start our study session on the Zones and Uses in the 2025 Code Package for Redmond 2050. I'd like to bring up Becky Fry.
Okay, good evening, Commissioners. It's my understanding that we got through most of the conversations on this topic. We just wanted to open it up tonight to see if there's anything new that you wanted to add or any other questions. We anticipated getting approval tonight to just set this aside and come back when we make a formal. But if you're ready at this point to do that, we'll officially set this one aside. We'll close all the public hearings. But if you've got any other questions or things to add to the issues matrix.
Right. So in that case, I'm going to close the public hearing to written comment just for Zones and Uses. We were already closed verbal. And we will move on to our next item. So this will be the public hearing on incentives and requirements in the 2025 Code Package for Redmond 2050. Bringing up Becky Fry and Ian Lefcourt.
Thank you, Chair. We have a brief PowerPoint, and then we have several public commentators who wish to address the commission. Okay, where we last left off in December, the commission had expressed interest in staff to provide an analysis and address four key questions related to step-down provisions and the financial implications thereof. So the first question we have to ask is, what is a step-down provision? And at a high level, it is a step-by-step transition provision. So rather than going completely from the status quo, the current code, to the proposed code, there is a series of transitionary steps. Specifically for affordable housing, this means a gentle transition from the affordability requirement. And remember, generally, for affordable housing in Redmond, there are two different levers in our affordability requirements. The quantity of affordable housing units and the level of affordability for the affordable housing units. I don't know if I can make this bigger without zooming out of the... It is full screen on my screen, so I apologize. Chip, is there a way we can get the PowerPoint to take up more of the screen?
There we go. Look at that. That's why he's the manager. So the Planning Commission requests to staff a few of the criteria to help guide our analysis. The first is proportion, the step-down provision, relative to the amount of growth going to Marymore. That was the same proportion as was for Overlake. So as we recall, for our growth allocations, different areas of the city have different amounts of jobs and housing growth allocated to them. Second, keep the area median income level constant at 50% AMI and change the required affordable housing set-aside. Now, this is different than Overlake and worth noting because Marymore is already at the 50% area median income for affordable units. The third was to calculate the opportunity cost of the step-down. Basically, how many affordable units would we leave on the table that would not be constructed if we implemented a step-down provision? And then finally, kind of the engine of all of this, the real question is, what is the financial impact? And provide staff analysis on whether we believe that would kick-start development. So here's the first component where we proportioned the Marymore step-down by growth allocation. You can see for Overlake, there was about 8,350 housing units allocated, and the step-down provision impacted 450 units. Okay? So that's about 5.4%. We know that Marymore has 3,170 housing units allocated, so if we do that same 5.4%, we get 171 units. So that's how we came to the step-down provision of 171 units. Staff tested two different scenarios. The first is a one-step scenario, where we just kept it constant and said for all of that 171 step-down units, you stay at 10% set-aside. We also tried a three-step scenario, where we broke that down into three different tranches and slowly escalated the set-aside to 10, to 12, to 14, and then finally to the full 15% set-aside. How many affordable units would be lost if there was a step-down provision? This is the opportunity cost question. And as you can see, it's single digits for both scenarios, and that's largely because the overall amount of step-down units is 171, right? So we quickly burn through that. That could be one development. And the yield-on-cost and financial implications. Remember, yield-on-cost, higher is better for development. Between the three study areas, Marymore Core and Marymore Edge saw a .1 yield-on-cost increase, and urban mixed-use stayed about the same. The reason for this is that, again, it's a relatively modest change, and, as we recall, the methodology here is assuming the baseline development capacity. It's not considering all that extra potential that could come from the incentive package. And asking the ultimate question, will this kick-start development? It seems unlikely. The threshold from our private market community partners has suggested they're more in the range of, oh, anywhere between like 6.0 to 6.75 is the threshold they're looking for. And so the .1 difference here is not really making or breaking it. And we do want to emphasize, again, we must consider that this is a long-range plan, and even if we maintained the status quo affordability, it would still not be financially feasible. That's just how economic conditions go sometimes. We saw this in the 2007 recession. Sometimes the overall development costs, interest rates, all of those pieces simply don't come together to make projects feasible. So that is the quick little PowerPoint that went through the content that was provided in the issues matrix. And with that, we would like to invite up the community members to provide their comment.
Great. So I am going to open the public hearing, and we will start with written, or sorry, with people in the audience today, or...
Yes, please.
Let you introduce.
And first up is David M.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners and staff. I'm David Morton, Redmond 98053. This comment is relevant to issue 11.5 in the issues matrix. As Initiative 2066 challenges electrification mandates, I recommend including flexible language in the Green Building Program, or Appendix 10, to future-proof its provisions. This adaptability is essential for ensuring that Redmond can maintain its sustainability goals while navigating a rapidly evolving legislative landscape at the state and federal levels. By embedding flexibility into the city's policies, Redmond will be better positioned to respond effectively to potential legal or regulatory shifts that may obstruct electrification initiatives. Specifically, future-proofing could include incorporating provisions for phased implementation timelines, allowing the city to accelerate or delay compliance requirements based on prevailing conditions. For instance, while electrification readiness is an ideal standard, contingency plans could explore hybrid electrification systems as interim solutions. This would help developers meet evolving standards without facing prohibitive costs or project delays, while ensuring progress towards the city's sustainability goals. Flexibility also means planning for innovation. By allowing for emerging technologies in areas like energy storage, smart grid integration, and carbon capture, the city can remain at the forefront of sustainability without being tied to specific technologies or methods. Aligning electrification goals with broader infrastructure improvements, like investments in renewable energy and grid capacity, can help future-proof these measures. Coordination with regional utility providers and stakeholders will ensure that Redmond's policies are feasible within the broader energy ecosystem while reducing potential roadblocks. Finally, community education and engagement should be part of this flexible approach. Clear communication about electrification goals and their benefits will build public support and provide feedback loops for policy adjustments. This transparency ensures that policies remain effective and equitable balancing environmental priorities with economic and social considerations. In conclusion, future-proofing electrification mandates with flexible language will enable Redmond to adapt to legal, technological, and market changes while transitioning to a greener future and maintaining its leadership and sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Devon K.
You can start with your name and address.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners and staff. My name is Devon Kellogg. I'm a parent, teacher, and stable climate advocate living on Education Hill. I'm here tonight to speak on the Green Building Program, specifically EV charging and building electrification. As for EV charging, I'm excited to see the city taking leadership role in equity and availability of charging infrastructure in multifamily buildings. I would like to offer a suggestion to look into using outlet-switching devices to reduce the need for dedicated wiring at every parking stall. And as mentioned before, please also include necessary capacity for bidirectional charging so that as more EVs are equipped with this new capability, our cars can be used as backup power for buildings and/or help support grid resilience. I was super excited to see the electrification requirements in the Green Building Program and new construction. As we know, this technology is not only healthier, safer, and more efficient, it's necessary for us to meet critical climate goals this decade. I was equally disappointed to read these elements may be stripped out due to I-2066. This would create equity issues in terms of access to energy-efficient heating and cooling options and exposure to toxic indoor air quality. For example, 13% of childhood asthma cases are caused by gas cooktops, and some of the volatile organic chemicals found in natural gas contain known carcinogens. It also ignores known safety risks of filling our homes and rights away with combustible appliances and pipelines, like the recent Union Hill incident where 7 million cubic feet of methane was off-gassed to prevent a dangerous pressure buildup on Union Hill on December 6. I experienced a smaller-scale version of this in my own home when our gas-water heater tripped a pressure-relief valve in the middle of the night, spewing boiling water all over our front porch. I found out later, had the valve not worked, the hot-water tank, which is located right below my daughter's bedroom, would have exploded. In addition to health, equity, and safety risks, removing electrification requirements would delay critical climate goals, which will drive up electricity, construction, and insurance costs even higher. It also unfairly puts the entire burden of expensive retrofits onto building owners and residents. One way to avoid these outcomes and still be in compliance with EPCA and I-2066 is to require electric-ready outlets near any appliances. This is not a prohibition or an incentivization. This is simply a way to allow for broader consumer choice, promote equity, and to future-proof Redmond's building stock. Electric-ready building codes are different than various performance pathways our state building codes currently use, which are facing legal challenges. There are several organizations which provide model code and can help cities navigate the legal landscapes. I will include references in my written comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Wei Z. And if you could provide your address and full name. Thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone. I'm a property owner in the Marymore and across the street from Light Rail Station. And also here to present other two landowners in Marymore. Together, we hold about 50% of Marymore's undeveloped multifamily land and 70% of Marymore Core Zone. It's very important we have the larger site. As a landowner, we fully support the common goal in the Redmond 2050 Plan, which is, I summarized, so to expand the housing supply in Redmond's central area to accommodate the economic growth with emphasis on social equality and environmental responsibility. It's a long sentence, but try to summarize everything. To achieve this goal, we need to develop more multifamily projects. So that's very effective way to supply. To achieve that, we also have to realize there's a couple players here in the process, development process, which is developer who not necessarily have land, landowner, property like myself, and then the city. So the different players have to be great together to make the process go, right? Assuming developer have land is error, I think. It's not correct. So to do that, we hire architects, engineers, and especially a developer as a consultant to run a performer, to check on how the policy impact the redevelopment. So what we found out is, among all the new policies, the greatest concern is a substantial increase in affordability requirement from 10% to 15%, which is the most significant rise among all the neighborhood in Redmond's rezoning. So I don't know why, but it's very heavy. So we pick up two models, assuming one 10%, one is 15%, always a story high. So how that goes, assuming they all have the same market rent, same cost of a construction, same consultant fee, and expected return for the developers. All this is a fair market value we put in, okay? And then ask the question at the end of the day, how much land value the developer willing to buy from us? So that simplifies the thinking. So the result for my property, as example, under the 10% model, the land value is 16.2 million, while the 15% model values the land at 9.5 million. It's a 41% reduction. I know you can argue the economy may change over the time, right? But so does the different fair market value input are the same. So the gap between these two still remain the same, 40%. It's just the math, right? Doesn't matter how it changed. So the question become as a landowner, do we want to sell the land as a discount 40%? You know, obvious answer, no. So developer have no land, so no development. So then, next, I want to talk about the potential opportunity loss from common sense, I understand. Number one is unit loss. Obviously, roughly based on our model, our site, we have a 500-yield, assuming a story. Then, the overall land available for a developed multifamily is about 1.6 million square feet. So that yield probably has an input of 3,000 to 4,000 units yields potentially, overall in the undeveloped area in Marymore. Thinking about if nobody want to sell the land for a long time, and then there's no development, there will be a loss for everyone. Secondly, the ridership. I Googled this online and found out that Sun Transit invested $1.5 billion...
Excuse me, we are close to the time limit?
For 3.4...
Can you please wrap?
Yeah, 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 miles.
If you have additional comments, you're welcome to send them written.
So the ridership loss, and then the community livability loss, because no residential, no support for the retail. The vibrant neighborhood doesn't exist. So I hope this factor can be reconsidered. Thank you.
Please feel free to send your full comment if you didn't get a chance to finish.
Next, we have Katie K.
Good evening, Commissioners. Katie Kendall, here, office space in Seattle, Land Use Attorney, representing Mr. Zhang. This is Winston Development. Just the information that he provided you is the information that I gave in the December 20th email, just to kind of connect those dots as well. I sent a detailed comment letter, kind of reiterating some of my comments this evening. I just wanted to come here to, I'm not going to repeat them. But I did want to thank the city for analyzing the step-down program. I still think it's a valuable tool, and I asked the city to look at that. And you could either look at the number of units, or you could actually look at a number of projects. That's what Issacaw did in a project. And I don't know if we need to think of this as incentivizing development as opposed to maybe helping development continue to work and happen, right? It's a little bit of both. But I wanted to make clear that our primary request in all of our comments is that we don't need a step-down program if we have 10% at 50% AMI. That's the primary request. That's what Mr. Zhang is requesting as well, as well as the property owners in the urban mixed-use zone as well. You've heard from Mr. Zhang that it reduces the value of the property, and he's representing a large chunk of the owners in Marymore. And if they're all thinking that their property's not getting the appropriate price, then we're not going to see development for quite some time. And I just want you guys to think about that. I know this is a long-term process, and it's really hard to balance that. I appreciate the difficulty here. But I also want you to appreciate, if we want development, we want it soon, and we want it near light rail, we really need to reconsider these policies. And just quickly to respond to Ian's statement on development feasibility, he's right that margins are tight. Some developers can't make it work. But part of the reason in the analysis that you're seeing that nothing is feasible now is that in the existing zoning, we're looking at base capacity. We're not looking at what a project can build now, today. And that's how, in Overlake, it says, the models said, you can't develop today, under the base model. But you can if you use the incentives. And we actually have three, I have working with developers on three projects that are going to start construction this spring, as soon as they get their building permits. So not all development is stopped, and I want to make that clear. Some is. It's a tough market, but it's not all stopped. And part of the model's issue is that when you're only looking at the base, it doesn't seem feasible today, but that's only looking at half the story. And so I want you to consider that as you're looking forward here. To conclude, my email has all the other information. We would ask the Planning Commission to look at imposing an inclusionary requirement of 10% at 50% AMI for both the urban mixed-use and Marymore zones to align it more closely with the rest of the city. Thanks.
Thank you.
And that concludes the list of community members who signed up to speak.
Great, thank you. Alright, so in that case, I am going to close the verbal, but leave written comment And we will switch to our study session.
Okay, let me open up the issues matrix.
While Ian's doing that, I just want to help set some expectations. There's a lot going on in this package, and so we were hoping to just free everybody's brain space a little bit to just say, housing is tonight, and incentives are your next meeting, so that you could just focus on one thing at a time, because there's a lot of numbers in both. So if there's anything, we do want to continue conversation, and you're free to have conversations as you want tonight, but we were hoping to just help focus conversations a little bit.
Thank you for setting that context, Becky. Yeah, the hope from staff is that if the commission is comfortable tonight, we can provide staff direction on how you would like to address these affordable housing comments. And we actually only have this one item in the issues matrix that speaks directly to the step-down provision. So please let us know what you're thinking.
Right. And technically, this is Aparna's issue to begin with, so I'm going to let her respond first, and then if there's additional conversation after that, then we can go there.
I believe that the step-down provision doesn't do that much based on the numbers presented. I think that we shouldn't consider that, but I think, to be fair to everybody, I think we should talk about not bringing down to the 10%, but if there is an appetite in the commission to consider from a 15% mark to maybe a 12 or a 14% mark, just reduce the number of units as opposed to anything else. Like, basically, I think this issue can be closed, according to me. But I want to bring up the fact that I don't think that the topic is closed.
So can you clarify, you're pulling numbers sort of out of the air. Can you clarify where those are coming from?
So what I'm looking at right now is, we've got 15% at 50% AMI. In my head, the 50% is non-negotiable in terms of the deepening affordability level. So if we keep that constant, then all we have is that 15% number to play with if the step-down isn't doing anything for anybody. If that is the case, then I would say maybe 12, 13% on that as opposed... If that is the case, then I would say maybe 12, 13% on that as opposed to the 10% that people that we've heard from tonight in the public comments. I would say 10% is too low. But I would say that to kickstart, instead, we could consider taking some lessons from the step down plan and pulling it up to say 13% AM, at 50% AMI. I don't want to close this issue because I still think it's germane to the whole commission. But I, as the numbers go, I think we could close it, but.
So my preference would be not to just like throw a dart at the wall, numbers wise. If we're proposing a serious change to the city's proposal, I would like to see math or models or some sort of that number, numbers based argument backing that.
No, that is, that is absolutely what I meant.
I think what I'm hearing here is there's a small amount of feedback from developers in the community that they would prefer not to have the affordable housing goals met. But there, I mean, that is something that we discussed at length in the Redmond 2050 process, in terms of what our goals were and what we were trying to meet. So if we're proposing a change that would drastically reduce the amount of housing we're expecting to meet, I think we should really be clear why that change would be a good idea and what numbers you're expecting, or like a little bit more thought about it instead of just arguing them down.
No, I agree. And what I meant by that other number was that we would know how many units we would lose in that process. Because what I don't see in this is, let's say 15% is what total units are we expecting in the housing at 15%? What are the total units, right? So I know that's 171 for as a ratio, right? But if you're looking at, what is the total units here? Is it 6,000? No, it's something like that, right?
The total housing growth for Marymore is about 3,000.
Is about 3,000. So 15% of that would be how many units? So my, my understanding is, do we want to explore, like my question basically, let me rephrase that. My question is, should we consider something like a 13%?
Well, instead of posing it as a question, because I don't think that's really appropriate right now, if you have an alternate proposal, you could suggest it and argue for it.
Without data, I can't propose.
In contrast, well, that's sort of my point, is that it does feel sort of data free right now. And we do have a proposal from the city that is backed by models. So I would, unless you have a reason for the math to.
Okay.
Or a proposal that is, you would like us to seriously discuss, but I don't want to bargain. This isn't a bargaining.
I, Commissioner Van Nyman.
I understand that, Chair. I just want to say that let's just talk about the step down one first to close that.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
I would just like to point out, we have three commissioners who were not on, were not here for the previous discussions, and they have not been through this debate such as it is, a bargaining issue, whatever you want to call it. I continue to be very skeptical of imposing goals that make it so that we end up with less housing, which drives supply down and keeps prices high. That if you are doing things that are making it easier for developers to build, you will get more housing as opposed to constraining them. And so is it data free to say 12 and 1/2%? I don't know. Like, I mean, we, I guess we would have to see what, you have very specific targets for the affordable housing goals from the county, what is it, the state, right? And so if we, if we were to say, start changing this, those numbers don't math, right? Is that?
The likelihood of achieving that goal would dramatically decrease, yes.
But we are obligated as a city to say, here is our plan, and here's the, you know, the expectation on, you have to have a plan, right? And I guess maybe one of the things I've struggled with is that my plan in a perfect world would be do everything you can to let developers build, like, and that will in itself, you know, people start moving and the housing that's left behind, like when people move into these nice new places, it frees up housing where, and those prices drop. And that's how you start to bring prices down. But that is maybe not considered a plan. It doesn't fit into a spreadsheet that says 15% at 15% AMI leads to 450 units.
There's a few good points there, and especially, especially because some of the commissioners were not here at the start of Redmond 2050. So I, let's start with the supply discussion that Commissioner Van Nyman brought up, right? Like, if we could just let the development come as much as possible, there would have an impact on rents once a certain threshold of supply was satisfied. That conversation is now outside of the scope in front of the planning commission. I mean, it was, it's kind of outside the scope even a while ago, because the way that growth allocations work is that the state estimates an amount and then sends it to regions, and then the regions actually have conversations and allocate that growth amongst themselves. So it's kind of zero sum, right? If I get two brownies, it means the planning commission gets two brownies less. But the growth allocation then gets set to a point where there's that consensus between the different jurisdictions. And then each jurisdiction must plan to plausibly accommodate that growth. So, for example, to Commissioner Van Nyman's point, really, we can't at this point just create more opportunity for development beyond that scope. We also did an environmental impact statement, investment in a whole CIPA, calculating the impact of all that. And so where does, if that avenue is kind of set in stone at this point, what are other considerations? The two main ways that City of Redmond has historically gotten affordable units, and specifically affordable units at the levels of affordability we're talking, those 60, 50, even in some cases 30% AMI levels. The two main mechanisms are, one, are mandatory inclusionary zoning, and two, kind of one-off special development types, whether that's through the arch, the Arch Housing Trust Fund, like with our Together Center, or if it's with organizational partners like King County Housing Authority. And those are kind of the ways we get there. And typically, the inclusionary zoning has targeted more the 80% AMI. And this speaks to one of the absolute most important reasons to get inclusionary zoning right, is that for those other approaches of the Housing Trust Fund and whatnot, that takes subsidized dollars. The inclusionary zoning happens in cohesion with the private market development. That is such a tremendous opportunity. And the timing of this opportunity is also important, because as we recall, whenever we increase our mandatory inclusionary zoning, it must be associated with a package of other zoning changes that creates a net increased benefit to development. So we have to give more than we're taking back. And that speaks to both the kind of outcome importance of this opportunity and timing, but also our process. Because if we put forth this recommendation, adopt it, and then say six months, 18 months, we see that it's not working, we can always tone it down. We cannot necessarily tone it up unless we do more zoning. Inclusionary zoning is a tremendous success. Adopted in the early 1990s, Redmond has now created more than 1,000 occupied, cost-controlled affordable housing units. We are the leader in the East King County region for the creation of affordable units on a per capita basis, and it is because of this workhorse. So to the overall point, staff could conduct further analysis about the opportunity cost of units from 15% of Marymore to 12.5. But staff has done rigorous analysis, and the methodology is consistent with what we've done in the other regions of the city. We are confident that this has a reasonable directional conclusion and would create affordable housing. And the planning commission does, of course, have your purview to interpret the council adopted Redmond 2050 direction, to make sure it aligns with council. But I, we're pretty confident with where we are. And Commissioner Van Nyman, thank you for letting me just add a whole bunch of background and context, because I think your comments are really important.
Commissioner Kuplee.
The benefit of Commissioners Coleman, Gagne, and myself, since we weren't here as part of that process of putting together the required affordability numbers, why do the UMU zones and the Marymore zones have higher percentages compared to the others? My initial gut response to that is that that does feel like a tax to those people if their property values are reduced because of those requirements.
It is proportionate to the amount that we are, to the development capacity we are giving, right? So if we're giving more development capacity, then we could ask for more in public benefit through affordable housing back.
Go ahead.
So just to follow up and make sure I understand, in those zones, you can build more than you can the other zones, therefore the required affordability is greater. Is that true?
The change is greater. So it's based off of the amount of change. So I believe it was the last month, there was another presentation, we can provide another link back to it, but it talked about how we're not making or suggesting any changes in downtown because the zoning changes are minimal for most of downtown. So as Ian had mentioned, the state law around the requirement that you balance everything out, and that we are asking and giving equivalent or better, that's the reason why the change is greater in some areas or not at all in others. Because it's not amount of what we're requiring in each of those spaces, it's the amount of change that's happening in that spot.
So just to illustrate and tell me if this makes sense, if I could only build five units there before, and now I can build 50, versus somewhere where I could build 25 before and I could build 50, that first place is getting a greater change, therefore the requirement is higher, is that correct?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Commissioner Aparna.
Ian, I really liked what you said about the inclusionary zoning. It's that it can't be toned up, but it can be put down, like in the sense of a revaluation. So for me, I think that's a very significant opportunity here, which doesn't show up in the numbers, because we have one shot at this right now. Then eventually, yeah, if it's not working, then we can talk about it. Which comes to my question, which needs to be added to the matrix, is how formally have we, or how often or when are we likely to do the review of whether these processes are, these, these numbers are working for us?
That's a really good question. So by state law, in five years, we have to do a report. This is how we're doing. What did we expect to do? How did we do on that? We are also going to be tracking annually a lot of those things. We have to be, we're required to put together a series of reports for a number of agencies. And so we're going to be tracking, it'll probably take at least three years of data before we see any trends, right? So that five-year report is probably going to be our first best identifier of what's working and what's not, and what, how we might want to adjust. But if something comes up that we see is a major roadblock, that we need to make an adjustment sooner than that, because it becomes glaringly apparent, or a new opportunity opens up, that if a code adjustment can help make that happen, we don't have to wait five, 10 years to make an adjustment. But it will take several years of data to show if there is a hitch or not a hitch. There's a lot of different nuances to the code changes that are happening, from parking to open space to the incentive program. There's so much change going on. It's really going to take several projects coming in for people to really understand the flexibility and how they can utilize that. So it's not something we anticipate changing within the next couple of years, but it is something that we are required by state to monitor. And so we could provide updates to the planning commission as we get.
And just to clarify on those, in the past, where have you published those reports?
These are all new.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, great. Okay. Can you speak to that a little bit?
There's a whole series of reports that are required from the King County Planning Policies, the Vision 2050, and at the state level. There's requirements from planning, housing, transportation. There's a whole series of monitoring reports that are new in this cycle from a lot of different planning agencies. So we could probably at a later planning commission, go through what we might have to start building and reporting. I would suggest that maybe happen maybe in the summer. We can talk to you about the reports that we're going to have to start building and reporting on.
That might be a fun workshop agenda item.
Vice Chair Wood here.
So pragmatically speaking, it sounds like if we lock on the 15%, we're all intents and purposes, we wouldn't make any changes for five years unless, unless there's more than a mistake in our policy, in our, in our thinking. Is that basically the gist of what you're saying, that we'd have to wait five years?
Not necessarily. I mean, if something comes up in two or three years, the council says, no, we want to make a change sooner than that.
Would you be able to illustrate an example of what would prompt a change or reconsideration? Because it sounds, because what I'm hearing is that if, if, if the landing of this policy, we realize there's some, some rough spots, we would change it, but it just feels like there's really not going to be any changes for five years.
Well, for example, not necessarily in, you know, inclusionary zoning, because not very many people in this area have inclusionary zoning, but in similar just new requirements in general, the last 30 years, I've come across a number of cases where, you know, the, the market crashes, right? That happens. You know, we've had wars break out, we've had all sorts of things happen, where we have temporary things that are happening that all cities would just say, hey, for a period of time, we're going to pause the implementation of these particular sets of codes, or they might repeal them. I mean, there's lots of ways that you can do that. A temporary pause is actually fairly frequent when you have major upheavals that are happening that aren't localized, right? A national upheaval would be one that's a really, we allowed new things to happen, we, that's we streeterries, right, during the pandemic, right? So there's lots of ways that you can make micro adjustments. Then you can also have like major changes, like a new employer comes in and wants to do something, and wants to do a major development agreement for a huge project. And as a part of that, the negotiation is, okay, we're going to give this and give that, right? And so as a part of that new opportunity that nobody knew about, right, because it just comes out of nowhere, they might identify a trade that says, okay, because we're getting it over here, we don't necessarily need it over there anymore, so maybe we could relax over there. So lots of different things that could happen. And the great thing about our code is we do annual code reviews, we monitor projects that come in, we see how things are going, we talk, and we have our annual docket process. So we can actually pull through those processes, updates as well. And council can also give direction for staff. And as a part of your development of your annual docket, you all also get to set some conversations as well. So there's lots of different ways that you can address changes or things that you see, nobody's taking advantage of that in this particular area, why not? Let's do a study. Put that study on it so we can really identify why, because maybe what looks like the reason why isn't the real reason why. So we can put a study on a work plan. So there's lots of different ways that we can go about that in the future. Nothing that we're doing today is totally set in stone. The key point is, as Ian mentioned, it's ratcheting up with the zoning has to happen at the same time because of state law requirements.
Commissioner Coleman first, and then we'll keep going around.
Thank you. As I think, you know, I'd sent, I had a look at the, I think the details that Katie had sent and looked at the five-story, what's the difference in annual rent loss from having the affordable housing differential, like is an annual difference, for example, of like 270K if you look at the five-story between, you know, being at 15% and 10%. So I don't know if that, from a developer perspective, that's a huge amount of money or not, and what's acceptable. And as this conversation's been going, I've been trying to simplify in my own brain, because I feel, there's a couple of comments I want to make. One is, I feel like we are being the referees or judges between developers, landowners, and the council, right? We're sort of stuck in the middle. There's a lot of stuff to go. There's a lot of stuff to go through and look at, and I feel a bit of that. And the trade-off, for me, seems to be speed of build, to the comment about, hey, we have a light rail coming in, and we won't have any people using it because we won't have any buildings around there and people aren't going to walk there. Being, making a point, making that, that's not true, I know, but there'll be less. Speed of build and how much income the developers and the landowners want, either for selling the land or for building the buildings and getting the income that they want from that, versus the required units the council need or required by, by the, sorry, by the, you know, by the state. So those two things are in tension. My question, one of my questions is, what's acceptable for the builders and the landowners who've come in to talk tonight, right now? Like, what would you want? At the moment, you know, 10% of 50% AMI seems to be acceptable. Is that correct? And that's what I'm reading from this. But if you put that out the window, what would be acceptable to build tomorrow? So I, I think going back, Susan, to your point, like, I think there's other calculations I would ideally want to see to make, to make these decisions. It feels very abstract a bit, just looking at these numbers, without something saying, this is acceptable, this is not, or here's the cutoff point, and here's, here's where we will go to. So I don't see something coming in from the outside.
So this is such a good question. And this, we spent a lot of time last year kind of wrangling with that as a commission, because they're really, I mean, the city can, like, present their view, and they can present models that they've brought consultants in to do, but we don't have visibility into the developers' models, or into landowners' models, or any of that. So what we are trying to do is take the models that were presented in October and say, do these look reasonable? Are they taking the right things into account? Can we use them to make a decision? So is it, there is, you're completely putting your finger on a real thing. Like, we don't know that.
Right.
And they can come, anyone can come speak here, but that, they're not obligated to follow what they're saying here either. So it's, we're taking that input as a legitimate voice in the community, but you kind of have to make a judgment based on everything that's presented here. We won't necessarily get an answer. Like, even if we left this open and asked the city to come back, they're not going to be able to say, here's what the developers would do, or like, here's the line.
Yeah, and I think, sorry, I just one last point here. The outcome of that is, is the speed of development, based on when builders are going to, and landowners are prepared to actually start. If we set the line between, that, that, you know, we, we've talked about here, if we put it at 15%, what I read is, people don't want to start building until either conditions get better economically or not. So anyway, let me stop.
And to be fair, I do want to also say that we are very, very appreciative of the landowners that have been working with us on this and providing those sneak peeks, like Way and his team, and some of the other property owners in both downtown and Marymore, and obviously in Overlake as well, that did give us a sneak peek in their spreadsheets and show, and they've shared with the Planning Commission some of those. It is hard because their models are built differently than our models, right? So that, you can't just, like, put them side by side. How they estimate and just what they're looking at is a little bit different, and it does make it difficult. But we do want to say that we really do appreciate all of the information and the many, many meetings we've had for years with Marymore property owners in particular, to try to get down to that. But there is a, a level of, the no change is what works best for them right now, because the numbers aren't working right, no matter what we do and what the market is doing. And so if they, the, and as they just mentioned this evening too, that 10% of 50 is current code for Marymore. If they keep it right there, they're, they're in a much better position than if there's any change at all. So, and that, just want to reiterate, that is the conversation they've been having with us. Their, various models and very property owners have different perspectives on that as well.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Gagne.
Still a somewhat new commissioner, I have big, broad-stroke questions about some of the policy stuff. I do not want to ask folks to repeat things that, right, have already been discussed at length, but I think one thing I'm trying to wrap my brain around is the timeline, because I heard Ian talk about how there were way above levels between counties and cities, right, distribution of numbers, right? And that what was given to us is we have a duty to plausibly accommodate the growth, right? I'm hearing also that we have, I think, some increased accountability because our area is the landing point for the light rail. And what I'm maybe just not understanding, because I don't have a depth of experience, is the, the timeline. Like, it just feels like they're so squishy that I would assume, because we've got, what you've said, this duty to, right, reasonably accommodate the growth, that we are beneficiaries, ostensibly, of being at the end of the line, and that with that comes an obligation to provide affordable housing, right? Like, that was one of the contingencies, right, of us, of us needing to provide affordable housing. Is it really, is just we wait and see, or do we not have anything from the transit because of how we've benefited from that, that there aren't going to be any clear deadlines of when those things will be looked at?
That's a, a great question, and it's, it's a lot all at once, because there have been so many significant updates at the state, at the county, at the PSRC level, the multi-county planning policies. So the first thing we want to make clear is that those reporting requirements are independent of the fact that we have light rail. That's just now applying to different jurisdictions within those planning purviews. So everyone has to do those. The second piece is that the growth discussions, those overall numbers, they, they weren't necessarily higher for Redmond because we had that light rail, but it was a consideration of good faith negotiating between the different jurisdictions when we accommodated it. Now, the last question, which I find, this, this is a really key point as well, is the opportunity for more affordable housing because of the light rail, we do have some quite exciting opportunities because of that. Sound Transit builds the stations for light rail, right? And in terms of the construction, they typically buy much more land than the final result station will actually need. So what do they do with all that surplus land? They coordinate with the local jurisdiction to discount that land to qualified providers who build affordable housing on that surplus land. So right now, at our Overlake Village Station, the parcel kind of looked like the state of Nevada, and the station itself is only going to take, like, a little tiny slice of it. And so the rest of it has been provided at a very, very low cost to be provided for affordable housing, which is currently under the stewardship of Bellwether. And so that will provide about 330-ish cost-controlled affordable units. So that's me taking a long way to get to your answer, but it's, Sound Transit does provide some boost to those numbers, but not in terms of, say, like, the direct money or anything like that. It's about leveraging those sites for affordable units.
And just to back up a tiny little bit, the Growth Management Act requires us to plan in 20-year increments. So our growth targets and goals that we're required to do are set for 20 years out, and our five-year and 10-year processes are just taking, how are we doing and our progress towards meeting those goals? And every time we go through that, we'll probably end up making some adjustments. So everything that we're doing now is not expecting all of these numbers to come in in the next five years. These are, we need these numbers to come in over the next 20, 25 years. And so that's why we keep mentioning it. It's really a long-term goal. Now, that might be different in our case and our community because of the opportunities of light rail opening, and you want to get the best development, the first in there, because that building is going to be in there for a long time. And so we have an opportunity timing right now that is different than other communities. So, but as far as when we need to meet those targets and in those goals, really, in 10 years, when we go back into our comp plan, we'll say, well, how are we doing? And this time around, we were doing spot on, we were doing perfect. And so next time around, we might be doing a little faster or a little slower, and then you just make adjustments because you're going to be assigned more growth next time anyway. And so you just continue to make adjustments as that goes. And that'll be the case. Every 10 years, we're going to be assigned more growth. We're never actually going to get to a final zone. I mean, there might be some areas that we say, yeah, that is done, because the aquifer or whatever it might be. But there is always going to be a changing situation, because we're never actually going to reach the end build-out condition, because that's not how the Growth Management Act works, if that's helpful.
Did you have a follow-up?
That you were describing, Ian, about what happened at Overlake and that slice of Nevada that, right, Sound Transit gave to a discount, does that fall, which umbrella does that fall into? Does that fall into the, like you were describing, the sort of subsidized and the supported, or that's private because it will be private development, or because Sound Transit owns it, it's the other area?
So Sound Transit sold the property at a discount to Bellwether, and it is deeply subsidized through a variety of different contributors. And those numbers still count for Redmond's progress towards those growth targets, right?
And there'll be a similar opportunity in Marymore for surplus property. Commissioner Parnah.
So I do want to add something to what Commissioner Coleman said. One other tension is the here and now versus the.
Interior mic, so they can hear.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. The one other tension is the long term versus the short term. All the performers are written for the now. So in that sense, if we look at, like, my earlier proposal, and I'm sort of changing my mind here a little bit, because I think Ian changed my mind, because I think when we look at it, this is the opportunity right now where we have more public benefit, there's the largest amount of change at this point. Grabbing it with both hands, but putting in place, so these reports that you're talking about, I would like some way to formalize it in a way that we, as a commission or the council, somewhere actually make it like part of the annual calendar to review it and say, hey, here's how we're doing. We thought this is a good idea, it's going great, we keep it on or not, whatever, right? But having that report sent to state, but nobody's seeing it, and having that full cycle here, somewhere, whether it's a code, it's a plan, it's a council work plan, I don't know where that goes, but really like an answer to that. But it's an opportunity here that I see. And again, when you brought up the docket, Becky, I think if there is a particular property that wants an exception and are willing to kind of talk through some other ideas, maybe that's the place for it, instead of making it like a blanket thing across Marymore.
Two things I do want to add. One, just really quickly, I think the annual docket process is a great way to do that, because you, as a part of that process, can propose a, something for the docket. So if you have all the reports as part of your preparation for if you do want to add anything to the docket, that's a great way to just help you guys decide if there is a change that you want to make. Secondly, I think one of the other things to point out too, is we do have a relief mechanism in the incentive program for a customized incentive package, and that is a relief mechanism as well. So you could do through a development agreement, a customized program. Now, it won't change the mandatory, but it might help balance out some of the mandatory requirements.
Commissioner Van Nijman.
So I don't know how much of this can be answered tonight. It's possible it would be better just to put it in the matrix and address it, but some of this is kind of specific and some of it is bigger picture. I want to address Katie's comment, feedbacks, the letter specifically. The idea that, I want to have an understanding of, even though she did a good job of explaining a lot of it, that I still had questions, where, when you're putting your model together, that you are averaging different existing scenarios, and that some landowners or in existing zones are way off of the average. And so in her example, you know, when you say you have to offer them something in order to impose the inclusionary zoning, in that particular example, it doesn't seem that, that you're actually meeting that at your end of the deal, right? That, that if, if that chunk of land today is able to have significantly more development placed on it today, then the model is exhibiting. So that's one question, based on the averaging of the zones. And then similar to that would be, and maybe we talked about this last time, but that when we're, the base model versus the, the new model and the comparison of the yield on cost, that, is the new model also what you would kind of consider a base? Like, there's no incentives on top of that, so it's still, because, because the point is that you're kind of comparing apples to oranges, that, that if the, you're comparing the base, but nobody actually uses the base, right? It's like the MSRP on a car. That's not what people actually traditionally have paid. You negotiate from there. So if the base is, is just a, a starting point, is that true also of the, the other side of the equation, the new model? Is that also just the starting point, and then there would be incentives on top of that?
Yes.
Okay, so that does make it more apples to apples?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And that's a great point, because in addition to the baseline comparison, which is baseline to baseline, apples to apples, all of the incentive work, the entire mechanism that makes it work, is again, that the incentives provide more than they're asking back, right? If that's not true, then the incentive program doesn't work. So this speaks to the theme of, all of our work here is kind of taking the most conservative fiscal return feasibility. It's, it's the most pessimistic, right? We know that there would be more. And I, that speaks to another good point, which is that we, we need to focus on the directionality, rather than any of these specific moments. We know that as a whole, the model shows reasonably that the direction improves feasibility compared to the status quo. And to Commissioner Van Nijman's point, when those incentives are even considered further, it should make that magnitude even bigger. Apples to apples, but the apple's getting bigger.
Right, no, I, I get that. And then I would just say, I would kind of like to see that feedback. Katie also mentioned she hadn't seen the feedback, and I would like to kind of understand, like, if you were going to just respond to her letter, what, you know, I'd like to see that.
I can.
I think the, the easiest way to do that and make sure we're transparent is to go ahead and put that specifically into the issues matrix.
Well, I, I feel like we have addressed this before, and, and the response is that this is the consistent methodology we've used. Whenever we're consolidating from 50 zones to 20, different zones are going to have different amounts of increased development capacity. The work we've done here is to make sure that everyone is still benefiting. And so if there is a, a, a consequence of the consolidation, that while everyone is getting more apple, there may be different amounts of apple everyone's getting. And that's just kind of a function of consolidation. If we go down this pathway of considering it on a parcel-by-parcel basis, we're just going to end up with no consolidation at all, and it'll just be a bunch of bespoke little requirements. And so we believe that this approach is transparent, accountable, consistent, and through those considerations, it's more fair for our community when we move forward with this. And we hope that through the cumulative partnership, the collaboration, the incentive program, and just the baseline increase in development capacity, all partners will see a benefit.
I like the concept of transparency, and I'd like to see some of that actually formally noted in some, you know what I mean? Like, instead of just verbal.
Yeah, we can, we can take the comments and the conversations and make sure it's, it's written.
It's represented in the issues matrix, so that council can see it. It's represented in the issues matrix so that council can see it.
When it goes through.
Sure, that sounds good.
Yeah. I, just to take Ian's analogy of the apple, it's like your homemade pumpkin pie versus the Costco pumpkin pie. It's like, there's significantly changes in there. And especially in Marymore where we're going, where you, right now, you're at two or three story buildings that could, with the incentive program, go to five or six. Now, by right, you can get five, six easy and you could go up to 12 with the incentive program. So there is a significant percentage change of capacity of what they can do. Now, obviously, materials and the market costs and the change of building code and when you reach a certain building height, I mean, all of those things are going to play into it. The other thing that we've also been trying to do too, remember, is that mass timber is also now comparable in cost to the podiums, especially with the incentive program. And that makes getting to a 12 story with mass timber maybe even more desirable and makes it helpful. So I mean, there's a lot of things that we're trying to do to be flexible, but just keep in mind that there are a lot of moving parts.
We're still bouncing, so Vice Chair Woodier, you're good. Commissioner Aparna?
I actually had a question about the property around the Sound Transit station, which you said could be at Marymore too, which could be, is that something that is part, I know that the incentive program has something related to added public benefits. So if, let's say some of the Marymore owners want to, landowners or developers want to help develop that property, or is there a developer already identified like Bellwether? Like, is the funding already, like, taken care of?
For the Marymore land, no. There is no funding and there is no selected nonprofit developer. There are a series of administrative steps and collaborative processes, including both internally with the city and also with Sound Transit's own leadership. And eventually, that opportunity will be provided in a request for proposals in a clear and fair interview process.
Thank you. No, I was just looking at it as a, as a potential incentive builder for the owners over there to fund whoever is the eventual developer. Not to develop it themselves, but, you know, that's an added public benefit, right? Like, so I'm just thinking out loud here, that's all.
All right, so I just want to pull, we're still going to keep going around on this, but I just want to sort of pull us up for a second and figure out where we're talking. So the original question that was opened on the matrix by Commissioner Aparna, we are going to close today. I think we should, we will have, oh, I know, there are like hands popping like little, everyone has a lot of opinions, which is great. I want people to just be thinking, as prefacing their question as we keep talking, is this something for the matrix that you need answered for next session? Or is it an additional comment just as we work through this? Just to help kind of make sure that we use, like, make the best of our last 20 minutes on discussion here. So with that, Commissioner, or sorry, Vice Chair Woodier.
Yeah, I'm just hoping for some clarification here because I want to shape my thinking on the 15% versus 10% or other. You mentioned that the Sound Transit Marymore surplus land, there are no proposals on it, no owners on that, no development plans on that, et cetera. Does that 15% take into consideration what might be developed there or does it not take into consideration?
It is somewhat distinctive of a consideration because the developments that occur at those surplus sites, just by definition of what the project goal is, will automatically satisfy the IZ requirements. So for example, the Overlake one, at the time it was going through, you would need to satisfy the, at the time, 10% at 80% AMI. Instead, they're providing 330 units at a variety of AMIs between like 60 and 30. And so it checks that box, it satisfies it.
Then as a follow up, that whatever is decided for Marymore would not be a cause of relief on that 15%? Is that what you're saying?
Cause of relief?
Well, because you're talking about the 15% requirement for Marymore. And what I'm wondering is, as plans are determined for the Marymore property, would that satisfy our housing needs to such a degree that we would offer a reduction on that 15% and the math still works out in terms of housing?
Oh, gotcha. Probably not to that degree because there is such a high demand. So even though the Marymore site would count towards that kind of affordable housing growth goal we have, we would still likely need that and the IZ to come close to our affordable, our estimated affordable housing need for Marymore.
Could we make it work so that we can give some relief to developers? Because I'm torn with this stalemate between demands of developers and our need for housing. And I'm wondering if there's other ways in which we could satisfy or strike a favorable balance. Because it doesn't feel like the balance that we're, of our decisions is a satisfactory balance.
So back to what I'd said before with Commissioner Aparna, if you have a suggestion, maybe we could start there, but I don't want to do a fishing, like, we have a proposal. So I think we should be debating the merits of the proposal unless you have an alternate proposal.
Okay, I'll shape my opinion on that. I'll shape my opinion based on that.
Commissioner Copley.
I have a proposal. Pioneer provision for the first three developments over 200 units in the Marymore Division. They would get a 10% or 12%. You set the number. So that we get to see those developments go in quickly when the light rail delivers and we get those affordable units. Because 60 affordable homes is much better than 90 theoretical unbuilt homes. So I'd like to at least see those go in soon. And then after that, it's 15%. So we're not sacrificing the 15% threshold because it's fair, now that I understand it's fair because there was additional development capacity given to those owners. So that makes sense to me. But we also want the speed of affordable units to that area as fast as possible. And it's a really tough market right now to get anything to pencil. So that would be my proposal would be first three developments at 200 plus units, 10% or something close.
Just, I am noting that, I do want to emphasize that even if that occurred, according to the modeling that we've demonstrated, for each of those developments, it would likely only improve yield on cost by 0.1. So the question of whether or not that would actually kickstart and get things quicker?
I understand that the delta there is 0.1%, but I also understand the delta for the landowner is 40%. So that's significant. And I think that is going to cause some pause on the landowner's behalf to determine whether or not they want to sell to a developer. And I also heard from Becky tonight that there's different models. So we're not necessarily all looking at the same math as far as how, you know, the yield on cost is determined here. And I think if we were looking at a gap of $7 million gap in land price, there'd be a much greater difference in the spread on yield on cost. I'm guessing that if that deal's going to go forward, it's probably yielding better than the 10-year treasury, which today is like 4.6. So it's probably going to be somewhere around 5, 6, which is, I think, the number you guys talked about, it needs to be between, I think, Ian, you had said earlier, 6 and 6.75. So that's where we need to get. We need to get to 6.75 to make these deals happen.
Yes, and I want to emphasize again that the figures in front of the commission are the most pessimistic yield on costs. And per Katie's feedback, there already are three developments who are close. So if economic conditions improve, that will have a much bigger impact on the estimated returns than there are for this change in step down provision for the affordable housing. I think it's also worth noting that there is also a tension between what benefits developers and what benefits landowners, right? Like, for the developers, it's good when the land value goes down. If you are a landowner, it's bad when the land value goes down. So it may not be possible to please all parties. And it has different considerations for the timing of development. But the high level theme of our conversation here is that that small amount of affordable housing change is likely not the most significant or even among the most significant factors of whether regional market conditions will be such that development is attractive enough for capital. But I have noted your recommendation. Thank you.
Commissioner Coleman.
I just want to go back to what Vice Chair Woodier was talking about. And I'm wondering whether we just had this conversation or if I just dreamt it, so please, please bear with me. If we have the Sound Transit giving us much cheaper land to build on, that's what I heard, right?
They don't give it to us, but they do discount land very low to a qualified nonprofit developer.
Okay, so what percentage is that generally?
It varies wildly for.
What's the range, I guess?
There are some developments where it's as small as like a couple hundred units that are mainly in the 80s. There's some, I think there's one that gets into the low 400s. And I think the AMIs in that one are mainly 60%. But the other consideration is because these are subsidized developments, there is also often integrated onsite supportive services for special populations, whether that's like veterans or DV survivors. And so that impacts both the amount of square footage that would otherwise go to units, but also provides that extra public benefit of providing more tailored equitable services. So for Overlake, it's 330 units and most of them, like, the average is probably around 50% AMI.
So, I mean, the thing that was on my mind, and this may not be something we could do, but if you have a developer who won't build right now in Marymore related to the, you know, other units versus ones that are on this Sound Transit land, can't they be given an incentive to build on the Sound Transit land while also getting more of a break on trying to build in Marymore itself? Like, what's the trade off there? I don't, that's what I'm really confused about. We've got cheaper land where we could put more affordable housing units.
We don't. The city doesn't.
Yeah, just from a context standpoint, just the way that the inclusionary is set up is that it supports the city's statement in our comprehensive plan that we want to spread out affordable housing and we don't want to isolate them and just have them in a couple of places. And so the inclusionary zoning allows that. That's the function whereby we do that distributional equity conversation. It is also something to keep in mind, the affordable housing need is astronomical and way more than what we were anticipating that we'll be able to get, no matter what we do. And the projects like the Sound Transit site are like ways that we can help jump into that a little bit further, but it doesn't take away from the fact that we need it spread out everywhere else. It's just that those special projects help us get a little bit further along than what we would be able to do on every parcel. So to, I love the idea in theory, but the need to get beyond the inclusionary in order to meet the needs of the community is something that we can only do on certain sites. And so to use that as a balancing act to relieve the requirements of what about elsewhere kind of puts us into a place where we're running into an issue where we just are digging ourselves into a hole while we're trying to build the mountain. And it's just not something that I think we can feasibly do while still managing to implement our comprehensive plan goals and policies and our vision for affordable housing.
Vice Chair, oh, sorry. Vice Chair Woodier, did you still have? No. Commissioner Van Nijmegen.
Is the electrification discussion relevant to tonight on housing?
We're going to wait on that until our next session. So we're just focusing on the affordability.
Okay.
Piece tonight. So we're not going to use them against each other. We're just going to go through affordability now and then we will go through a set of incentives and requirements at our next meeting. Are there any further comments on housing? Commissioner Aparna?
I don't know if it's too late in the game for this, but it would be really nice to have a pro forma template or a model template that everybody uses so we can really see the numbers. I know developers do it differently and every developer does it differently and every project will be different. But having a broad idea for people like us to compare, maybe not now, but at some point it would be really nice to see when these models come up for, maybe eventually when we do the cycle back and see how the program is doing, to say, hey, you know what, this is what we modeled, this is what our template modeled, and this is what people are saying right now. It's a good way to judge how something is doing if you can standardize something. I don't know if it's possible, but it's just a thought. Completely separate from the issue matrix. Sorry, Chair.
I just want to second that. I think that if the city of Redmond were to come up with a generally accepted development pro forma that they could share with developers and then people started to use that and we were all looking at the same thing, I think that would not only be really useful to us as a commission, but also useful to developers, to landowners, to the city, and would put the city in a great leadership position to demonstrate how this can be done in other places too.
Thank you for that feedback, commissioners. As part of this affordability analysis and as a part of the Overlake affordability analysis and the Neighborhood Residential, the city did collaborate to build pro formas and had plentiful and repeated collaboration with our private sector community partners. There are still slight differences, like, one that jumps to mind is how granular pro forma inputs are for like hard costs, whether it's just one big assumed number or if it's granulated like line by line. But substantively, it is the same. At a broad high level, they are the same. The model was reviewed both for formulaic accuracy and for plausibility of inputs. And our consensus of our robust community engagement was that they are reasonable, right? Now, if I go to lender A and I go to lender B, there might be slight differences. If I go to developer X and developer Y, there may be slight differences. But overall, the trend was that we got consensus that it was reasonable. I think the main quirk is when it's a different methodology, right? Like, if it's you're doing residual land value versus yield on cost, things like that. But I think to the spirit of your two questions, we fulfilled that.
And I also wanted to mention that one of the things that Ian did as soon as Way's team provided us with his numbers and his analysis is he took those numbers, which were in obviously a different format, and plugged it into the model and ran it. So we were able to at least take their numbers and run it through ours and see, you know, what it looked like. So in essence, we kind of have been already doing what you're speaking to.
All right, commissioners, this is a meaty topic. Thanks for a great conversation on this. Does anyone have any last things they would like to add to the issues matrix for next week or have we covered everything? All right, thank you.
For next week, thank you so much for everybody who emailed in their conversations last month and all the way through today, including, I got yours, Denise, and I'll respond to you. We are compiling all of that into a list of all of your feedback and questions and things you want to potentially add or adjust. And then what I'll do in your packet, we will have that for you to look through and review, you know, what's the current and what the comment from the commissioner, or there's a couple from staff in the community as well. And then we'll just go through them and we'll say, okay, do we agree? Yes, 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 no. And then we'll make that final adjustment and close this out, hopefully. Most people did comment that they didn't have a lot of major changes. I think, Aparna, your list of priorities was a little longer than everybody else's, which is fine, it's great. But I do feel like we are getting close to just being ready to move on. So I'm going to prep your packet for next week with the assumption that you'll have a list of things. a list of things that you'll be able to just start at the top, and we'll just go through and see, can we build consensus so that we can get ready to make a planning commission recommendation to council?
Maybe we could wait, is it a question about that process? Yes, Commissioner Aparna?
It's a procedural question about that topic. So had some follow-up on the things that we are not discussing, which is the 11.5, the green building program, but it relates to incentives and priorities. So should I just email you the stuff?
Yeah, we'll have that conversation all at the same time. We'll just go through everything that's outstanding. There are a few other things that aren't, like, incentive-related, but are related to the conversation. So we'll have all of that on the agenda for next week.
Okay, so if I email you the thing, then you can incorporate that, and we'll keep the issue matrix open, but...
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, if you have anything else that you need to add to the issues matrix to make sure that we have the full conversation that we need to have, the goal is to try to get a closed issues matrix by the end of the next meeting. Actually, you need a little bit more time, that's fine. But if we can get to a closed issues matrix so that we can move forward with the recommendation, that would help us be on time with getting to councils for their review in a timely manner. And then we can move on to discussing the design standards with you folks.
All right. No, we'll still do incentives and requirements next time. All right, so with that, we're going to move on to staff and commissioner updates.
Thank you, Chair Weston. So we have our regular meetings coming up, but the big item is that on January, wait, hold up, let me check my notes here, January 28th, a Tuesday, a Tuesday, you all have a joint meeting with the city council. Now, at this, we'll mainly be talking about design standards, and I want to give just a quick little breakdown of expectations and what goes on at these. So typically, you will sit at the front, where staff is now, council will be where you are currently. So we need to practice good microphone hygiene, turning it off when we're not talking, and leaning in when we are. There's typically a quick round of introductions, you know, who you are, your background, where you live, roundtable, everyone, the council and mayor typically participates in that as well. It will be live, so we'll be on a broadcast. There's going to be a, there's likely going to be a small presentation by staff, and then we'll have a discussion themselves. Now, we will note that it is a especially packed council agenda, and so it's likely that the time allocated on the agenda is exactly the amount of time you'll have. So that's the 28th. I am going to send a follow-up email with some other odds and ends about just what a joint council is, including a video of a previous one, just so we can get our bearings and figure out. But other than that, it's just a regular schedule from here on out with a much, most of our efforts, of course, focused on our 2025 package, Part 1 and Part 2, and then eventually, in a couple sessions, we'll get to our Part 3 with our design standards.
And also a reminder that with the joint meeting with council, you're going to be looking at your work plan ahead, too, so council's interested in your work plan. And so the functional plans that are coming this year and some of the other work that's happening, too. And also just a reminder that in a couple of months, you're going to start the annual docket process for this year as well. That is going, we're back to that process. So we'll, at some point, we'll have on your schedule how that works for those of you who have not been through an annual docket before.
Tuesday, 7:00 PM, January 28th, and that's it for staff updates.
Great, any commissioner updates? No. All right, well, with that, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Marymore adjourned.